Great. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 13th, 2022 East Long Meadow Town Council meeting. I would ask us to stand at this time and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, if we can take a moment of silence to reflect on all those that have passed before us and all the situations happening throughout not only our country but the world. Thank you. Okay. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, I have to announce that this meeting is being audio and video recorded by LCAT, and I would ask if anyone in the audience is recording. Okay, seeing none, we will jump right in. Public comments. Jeannie, we have two people signed up. Is Larry Rich here? Larry, would you like to come forwards? Perfect. Yeah, that would be perfect. Make yourself comfortable. So you've asked to talk under public comments regarding a possible zoning amendment.
State his name and address for the record.
If you could state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Larry Rich, 17 Autumn Ridge, East Long Meadow.
Thank you. What would you like to address with us?
Well, you've got copies in front of you.
We do.
302 in the body allows pigs in residential areas. Okay?
Yep.
I'm totally against that. 302 legally, in my opinion, makes things not lawful. In other words, we do not have a... You'll have to excuse me. I get pretty upset over this. In the last three years, I haven't had any comments from this board or the planning board. Three years. Now, I may have gotten a letter from you. Okay? But pardon me, it was inaccurate. Because I asked the question about pigs living in residential areas. And you came back in your letter saying that it doesn't show that they approve or disapprove. Even though they approve. I have a very large investment in my home. I have mice running around my foundation. Saturday, Friday, I'm sorry, Friday I was mowing the lawn. And I went because the pen is right on the line, property line. Went to go by the pen, and a black and yellow snake came out of the pen into my mower. I don't know how much more I can take because 302 should not be written up the way it is.
Yep. So just as referenced, Section 3.02 is the East Long Meadow zoning bylaws.
Yeah.
The zoning bylaws in regards to agricultural uses and what's allowed under agricultural uses, just for the public's knowledge. So I guess my question would be, coming forwards, what would you like, I mean, the town council to look at, a possible zone change to?
Let me tell you about the meeting I had with the planning board. It was laughable. I want to end up about the pigs. The president says... I have a friend that has a pig farm in a residential area, and he does very well. So I asked him, how many acres does he have? He says four and a half to four and three-quarter acres. I says, no, he doesn't. He's got 2.7 acres. His comment back to me was, what's a couple of acres? To me, that's laughable.
Marilyn, you have something?
Yeah. Mr. Rich, I'm Marilyn Richards. I realized that you had been in contact with the planning board previously when you came to us before, I guess it was before COVID, a long time ago.
Yes.
And I understand that the Director of Planning, Ms. Brothers, had put together a packet of information for you. She gave you some information that addressed the process that you should go through to sort of research what you might be able to do with this situation. Now, in that packet of information, at the very end, she cautioned you that before you went forward to do anything that was time-consuming or costly, that perhaps you should sit down with an attorney and review... No, please, sit down with an attorney and review the Mass General Laws that protect agriculture. And that's where our bylaws come from. And so I wondered if you did do that. Did you speak to someone about how you can address your problem while not violating Mass General Laws?
No, but the way that law reads... Do you have it in front of you?
Right here.
I mean, we currently have our bylaw in front of us.
Not Mass General Laws, we have the bylaw.
302.
Trying to find an E code.
So yes, I have it in front of me. Agricultural, horticulture, floriculture, viticulture, aquaculture uses on parcels of land more than five acres, including commercial livestock, dairy, poultry. And then 3.021 is basically the same thing on acreage less than five acres.
Less than five acres.
So what this is saying is if you're... If you are running a farm based on for profit, I think the situation next to you is that they're not considered a pig farm. They have a couple pot-bellied pigs that they're keeping as pets that are creating a nuisance.
Okay. The way I read 3021, or whatever you want to call it, is five acres or less, you can have anything you want as far as farming in a residential zone. In my opinion, that is not right.
Definition of agriculture addresses what can be in a residential zone. Right?
It does. So our zoning bylaw is based on Chapter 40A, Agricultural Regulations. So what we did is we basically took from the state and we're using that. I don't see the state looking to change the language.
Why only in A and AA?
A and AA.
AA zone.
No, no. So our agricultural rules cover all zones?
Covers what?
All our zones in town.
I'm afraid I disagree with you.
Well, it says, if I may.
Yes.
Under 3.02, general uses agriculture and then all the other categories, in all the zones, straight across the entire town, it's allowed in all the zones.
I read A, B. I mean, you go up to the top of that and go across, not allowed, not allowed.
If you're looking at more than... On parcels of land less than five acres. Okay, AA and A. That's, he's correct, he's correct. You're right. Less than five acres. More than five acres, it's anywhere in town. Right?
Yep.
And you're in AA zone?
I'm in AA zone. The pigs are in AA zone.
Size of lots, I would think.
So lives, farm business.
Farm stand.
So they're referring under 3.021 to commercial, commercial livestock, commercial business. What you're referring to is what I would consider a pet. There are two pot-bellied pigs. The person's not looking to raise multiple pigs. They're not looking to sell them. They're looking to keep them as animals, like a cat or a dog.
Okay. So let me ask you a question. Do you believe in rabies shots?
Do I believe in them? Yes.
You do. Okay. Read the last paragraph. Here.
Oh, in the front page.
Oh.
Okay, so it's basically saying that rabies can be given to pigs.
Shot has not been approved.
Okay.
So that automatically should boot.
Yeah. I think the best thing we can do is take it under advisement. We appreciate the information you've given us. We can ask our attorney Jesse Belcher-Timmy to take a look at it. Like I said, as far as the board itself tonight, I don't think there's anything we can do.
Didn't come here for an answer. I come here to explain my situation. Okay?
Okay.
May I?
Sure.
Mr. Rich, have you notified the Board of Health of the mice or the snakes that you're seeing?
I don't know if you've changed people in the Board of Health in the last three years.
We have.
But I did originally. And she came out to me saying, impeccable. Pigs live in the house all winter. You've got sand piles all around the house. Now, what they do with the waste, I have no idea.
Okay. Anyone else have a question for Mr. Rich? I appreciate you coming in. Like I said, we will take it. We'll talk to our town attorney and see if there's anything that we can do. And like I said, once we hear from him, I will have Jeannie send you a letter letting you know what we found out.
Well, the last time this happened, it might have been you, I don't know. The last meeting I had, I brought this up, and one of the councilmen stood up and told Kathleen that he'd look into it. Well, I never got an answer from him looking into it.
Who was that? I'm trying to recall who might that have been.
It might have been myself. Like I said, I'm a past chairman of the East Long Meadow Planning Board. So as far as the zoning aspect and all of this, I'm very familiar with it.
Planning Board said they'd get back to me.
I think the difficult part here is under planning, even if they wanted to change the zoning regulations to help out, it wouldn't help your situation because the neighbor would be grandfathered in as a pre-existing non-conforming.
Let me ask you about the grandfather.
Sure.
Okay? Say you have the farm, and all of a sudden, you're passing on to your son.
Yep.
Does the son come under the grandfather's law?
Well, if it's farming, the son would be under agricultural. Going forwards, the answer to that would be yes.
In other words, the grandfather's law goes as long as, you can go on for 100 years.
That's correct.
Okay, so your answer to me is you're going to get back.
Going to forward this to our town's attorney.
The way I read that 302, there is no longer, no longer A or AA zone. That's the way I read it.
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I thank you for listening.
Okay, Jeannie. Next on the list under public comments is Donna.
Donna.
This.
Right.
If you could bring her in, that would be great. Hello.
You got video, Donna?
I see, I can see you. I mean, I don't know what... I think you just have a big D for me.
That's her. No, that's Mike at the top of the screen.
Next to the D.
I can keep talking. I mean, if you need me on video.
It works, Donna.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to talk about the upcoming event we'd like to propose to you. It is the Oktoberfest that is, that we'd like to have on October 15th at Brown Farms. The idea behind this was that we wanted to feature the Brown Farm property, let people know that we have more than gardens there. We wanted to talk about our trails and just everything that we have. The trails have the, oh, the exercise features along the trail. And we just wanted to let people know what Brown Farm was all about. So that's where the idea came. And then I'm here tonight because we would like to have one, One Way Brewery and the brew practitioners participate in this event. We're looking at starting the event at noon and wrapping it up by 5:00. And do you have the diagram in front of you of the layout that we're proposing?
That will be attached.
No, we do not.
Okay. The plan is to put the two breweries inside what is the riding area for horses, so it's contained in a fenced area. And then we are asked, we have the Long Meadow Kitchen coming for food, and they'll have them set right outside. And then we have an area for games for kids. We're going to have a scavenger hunt on the trails. And then we have a parking plan, which also includes Mountain View across the street. And I've talked to the chief of police, and we're going to get a detail for that day to help with traffic going across Hampden Road. And that's, that's our... We're asking for your permission to have the breweries.
So I think we're doing that later on, right, Jeannie? Yeah.
But the, Donna?
Yes.
The application is just for One Way Brewing. It doesn't include brew practitioners. I don't know if that makes a difference with the council.
Okay, they were, they were an add. That's correct. I forgot. They, they had, they're an add after.
Okay.
I sent the application in. And I believe, I don't know if you've received the information from the kitchen, but that's also, I have that also that I received today. But, I mean, if that's a problem, then, then yes. I mean, we can certainly address that.
Yeah, address it later.
So Jeannie, when we come to that, we can discuss it a little bit further.
Discuss it, right.
I believe brew practitioners in the past has had a one-day license for the cultural event and stuff. So we have all their information.
They have, and this application is covered with everything they need for One Way Brewing, but the event is after your October 11 meeting. So maybe we could continue until then, or you could approve it contingent upon a supplemental application. You do it a number of ways.
Exactly.
If you want to bring it to that.
Yeah, we'll get, when we get to that. So Donna?
Yes.
Do you have any estimate how many people you would like to show up?
I originally said, I'm going to click on... Oh, there I am. Sorry about that. We, I originally put an 80 to 120. And then with the additional brewery coming aboard, I'm going to be prepared to anticipate more than that just because they're also advertising on social media. So as a one-time, first-time event, I'm a little cautious to say how many, but I want to be prepared for a big crowd, just in case.
If I remember right, correct me if I'm wrong, Marilyn, a few years back, before we switched forms of government, we had an event up there, and the turnout was very good. I believe Angela Thorpe was the lead on it.
Exactly. I remember that there was any issues.
So hopefully, if the same amount shows up, it'll be a nice crowd, which will be great. Show off one of our town properties that is wonderful, that most people don't know about. The walking trails up there are phenomenal. Does anyone have any questions for Donna?
I do.
Marilyn?
Donna, I know there is one family that abuts the farm. Perhaps, have you been in touch with the family at all? Just as an F, you know, courtesy to let them know what's going to be happening in their backyard?
That, no, that's a good point. Is that the White House?
That's the White House, yes.
Okay. No, I haven't, but I can certainly do that.
You know, that, that might, that might be helpful because, you know, this way they have a full understanding of what's happening.
Right.
Especially if you're expecting 120-plus people and parking.
Good point.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Donna, I appreciate it. Is there anyone in the audience, Don, with their hands up? I can't see that far, that would like to have a public comment?
Not that I see at the moment.
I see someone here. If you would like to come forwards, that way there we have you on the mic. And name and address would be awesome.
How you doing? I'm Jason Tito. I live at 112 Longview Drive in Long Meadow. I'm one of the owners of One Way Brewing. So if you guys have any questions?
Awesome.
I'm here to answer any of the questions you might have. If you want to wait till the licensing portion, we could do that. I don't want to announce myself.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we're going to move on. Council comments. Does anyone on the council have any thoughts, comments?
This is when you usually speak.
I was being nice. I was going to let everyone else talk before I jumped in. So the first thing I would like to say is a huge shout out to Chief Morset. I recently attended the September 11 memorial tribute up there. And I have to tell you, our fire department every year does a phenomenal job. And I was very pleased with the turnout, the residents, and very thankful that they asked me to say a few words. It's always nice every year to be able to show our respect. The other thing I saw, and I don't know if Erin's here, I heard something about a little E that was going to happen at the Council of Aging. Do we know anything about that? Is Erin?
I saw it in an email from her, but...
I thought it sounded so neat. Jeannie?
She may be in the audience for the application for the one-day liquor license there.
Okay.
She's not in the audience yet, but...
Okay. Would she like to say a couple of words on it? I thought it sounded really interesting and... You didn't know about that, did you?
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
You asked if I'd like to say a couple of words, and of course, yes, absolutely. Glad to make the opportunity. So glad you noticed. I need to give Alicia a lot of the credit. Alicia Smith, our program and volunteer coordinator. A lot of older folks came to her and said, you know, we can't go to the Biggie anymore. It's too hard to walk around, and it's too hard to get there and park. So she had the idea to bring the Biggie to them. And I have to say, she's done a great job of putting together a varied mix of games and entertainment. Jean's Northeast Country Band will be there. Lots of different senior services providers will be there, providing games and prizes. And we will have some animals on display and some vendors, as well as our usual farmer who comes to our farmer's market. So it should be a great time on Friday, the 29th, from 2:00 to 6:00. So please, please join us. And it's free to come and be at our little E.
It sounded very interesting, and I appreciate the information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Town manager report. Mary, do you have one for us?
I do. Thank you. The first order of business, in my view, from my report this week was to commend Jeannie Quaglietti in the town clerk's office for their remarkable, efficient administration of another election day. Enormous amounts of work go into that. And as I note in the report, there are certainly other departments that contribute to that efficiency, but they're all under the oversight of Ms. Quaglietti. And she does a terrific job, year in, year out, no matter how many elections we have or how many primaries. Now with early voting and mail-in ballots, I mean, the, the work has exponentially increased. But you'd never know it to look at the demeanor and the oversight that our clerk provides. So you're welcome, and thank you. With respect to the other business of the town, I did report, I spoke with the representative at Rep. Pueblo's office just to check on the status of our Home Rule Bill to remove our police department from civil service. And there was a hearing, a hearing in the event, in the, with the exception that they only took written testimony on August 15th. And there's no feedback yet, but that bill is moving along through the state legislature and hopefully will soon be, once they're back in session, I hope they can take some action on it to help us move forward with that. On other police notes, the chief has scheduled an assessment center for the selection or evaluation of the lieutenant, the deputy chief position. Not the deputy chief, that's the fire department. I get confused with all our new appointments. This is for a lieutenant in the police department. The assessment center is Saturday, and then the following Monday, the 19th, Chief Williams and I, as well as a chief from a neighboring town, I think from Hadley, will conduct oral interviews with the two applicants who have so far applied and will be the subject of that assessment center. Most of my attention in the last couple of weeks has been on drafting and preparing the advertisements for RFPs. As you know, if you've been in town hall at all, people are, I'm going to say, not literally sitting on top of each other, but pretty close. And we desperately need space. We did hire five new people within the town hall, as well as the four or five other members of the fire staff. as well as the four or five other, uh, members of the fire staff that are housed, obviously, in another building. But, um, they just have nowhere to sit, and I feel strongly that if we're gonna hire people with qualifications and expect them to do a professional job, that we need to treat them in such a fashion and provide suitable space for them. So I've issued an RFP for the acquisition of 3,000 square feet of office space, which is the most urgent need, and simultaneously, I've issued an RFP for the acquisition of a 30,000-square-foot office building, the intent being to be able to locate all of our staff under one roof, under a suitable, uh, space. So that's kind of a dream at this point. The, the RFPs will be advertised tomorrow in the central register. Bids will be opened on October 25th of '22, and the, my hope is that we at least get some traction on the, the 3,000-foot rental, uh, RFP, if not the, the larger issue. So, and those ads will also be published in the Springfield Republican tomorrow and the following Wednesday, um, in compliance with Chapter 30B requirements for advertising on real estate matters. Later on in your agenda, you have an order before you that I'm hopeful you'll sign off on, which is, uh, to eliminate the need for advertising for the acquisition of 70 Maple Street based on its unique qualities. The order was drafted by me with the assistance of Jesse Belcher-Timmy, who was kind enough to get some templates from other communities that have done similar work. Um, so the order's before you, and it tries to highlight the reasons that we consider the property unique and its, and its, um, relevance to our future development plans for that Maple Street corridor. The auditors, I don't want to steal Steve Sunder, I see him in the audience, but the auditors have finished their onsite, uh, physical examination of our town's books and records. Now they're doing their remote work, and I'm sure they're keeping Steve and his staff busy with, uh, any follow-up questions they have. But as soon as they issue a report, it will facilitate the preparation of the Schedule A for the Commonwealth, so that we can submit our paperwork for fiscal '22, and hopefully get a, an earlier, uh, certification of free cash than, than we received in prior years. Also, the, um, recently, we were notified by, um, John O'Leary of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission that there was an overage, uh, some leftover proceeds in our community development grant from 2018, and the consensus was that some of that money could be transferred from the categories for which it was originally appropriated to sidewalk fund. And that's, um, two charts showing the sidewalk, uh, sidewalks that are gonna be impacted with that, with the use of that money. Mr. Fenny is meeting on Thursday morning with, uh, representatives of the Pioneer Valley Commission and the vendor, who was awarded a contract in the rough amount of $170,000 to do this work. Also, the, the park grant application that's pending for the heritage park, uh, the next phase of heritage park design, uh, we found as a result of filing the application that because this, because 19 acres of the 61-acre parcel, when it was originally taken by the town under eminent domain, uh, was dedicated for school purposes. And the grant administrator for the park grant has explained to us that, um, it has to be all, the entire parcel has to be designated for recreation or park purposes. So I have drafted a motion and sent the opinion of council over to the school committee, uh, to the superintendent, asking, uh, Mr. Smith to put that matter on a future school committee agenda for their action. The only action the school committee would have to take is to allow the parcel to go to, notify the town council that it's relinquishing its claim on, for school purposes, um, for that particular parcel. And then we would be free to apply, otherwise our eligibility for that $400,000 is impacted. So that, that hasn't been scheduled yet, to my knowledge. I just sent that email the other day. We began negotiations with the fire department on, uh, one day last week, I think it was Thursday. And we have another meeting scheduled for the end of this month. Their contract also expired, uh, June 30th. We did have a ground rules meeting early in June. That, and we just never scheduled the secondary meeting, um, partly because of the town manager situation. But, uh, in any event, the negotiations are underway now. And, uh, this coming Thursday, September 15th, there's going to be a school building committee meeting at 4 o'clock in the central office conference room to discuss in further detail the design options that were selected by the school committee, by the school building committee, and forwarded, uh, to MSBA on August 25th, as a result of our meeting that day. And then the following Thursday, there's gonna be a public meeting here. And, uh, I would highly urge, if anybody is available, that you attend both of those meetings, because we feel that strongly, that, uh, participation by the council, by virtue of your presence and support, or questions, or participation in general, uh, will assist the community in understanding the importance of this initiative and help them to understand the relative costs and how they were evaluated, how the options were considered, and so on. So, uh, it's not too early, I think, to begin the, the public relations aspect of, of this adventure for the town. It is a generational decision, I think. And, uh, a lot of effort has gone into it by the members of the school building commission. So I, I would, uh, ask that if you're available, that you try to attend one or both of those meetings. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for our town manager? Wow, nothing? I'll let mine go for later. Okay, at this time, we're gonna move on to approval of minutes, the August 9th, 2022.
Oh, Ralph, may I add one thing?
Absolutely.
Forgive me, Thomas. I have a new deputy, and he's present tonight, Tom Christensen. I, I had it in my mind to make him the, the keynote speaker, but sitting next to Jeannie, my, my attention was distracted. Tom began, um, his service in the town manager's office on September 1st. Uh, and true to form, he's actually still operating with a foot in, in the DPW, as well as the other foot in the town manager's office. So I highly laud him for that and thank him, and I'm sure the DPW is appreciative. He played a very large role in that department as the deputy superintendent, and so far, they don't have, uh, a person, uh, in mind yet to take his place. So Tom and I sort of decided that it would be in the town's best interest to let him continue to work on the projects that he's got underway already, see them to conclusion, and, um, assist Mr. Fenny and, and all the other mates of his in the DPW, and, uh, and assist me when, when he's available. And so he's made himself available, and I appreciate it, and I want him to, uh, to let you know that he's here, and, uh, he's a quick study, so.
He is, and welcome and congratulations on, uh, your new position.
Very excited.
We are too.
Okay, I would entertain a motion at this time for the minutes.
I move we approve the August 9th, 2022 open session minutes. You're second.
I second. Having a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? I had sent my corrections to Jackie, and she efficiently took care of them. So with that, we don't need to do a roll call vote, which is different. All of those in, uh, favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. I heard Mike. Thank you, Mike. Okay, next is communications, correspondence, and announcements. In your packet, we have received a letter from, uh, Andy Fraser. I spoke with Andy with regards to this. He's outlined, uh, some of his observations he had with regards to, um, our town manager searches. I called Andy, I talked to him at length. Um, he has some good suggestions that I think we should all look at and consider as we go forwards. Um, I appreciate, uh, him reaching out to us, and I just wanted to make sure that every counselor actually received the letter and could go through it. Jeannie, do you have September 6th state primary report?
It's just a brief report. I appreciate your appreciation of me, but like Mary said, there's, we're at a town department head meeting over the summer, and I went around the room and thanked everybody, maybe 18 departments, and I'll take, building and planning, I just couldn't think of what they do, but they support me, I know, so that's important. And it was a tough one, because the election day was on the 6th, which was the day after Labor Day. We had, uh, Saturday and a full week of early voting prior to that. And because of that, I was missing some key players in my election workers, being some wardens and precinct clerks, which are very key players with the precincts. So my assistant Jackie stepped in as one of my precinct clerks. One of my registrars stepped in as my, um, my wardens, which he'd been for many years prior to being appointed registrar. I temporarily promoted some people into roles, and they, they learned things, and it was just, it was just, it's always a good, a good experience. But pretty much by the time election day gets there, it runs itself. There's fires to put out here and there, but, um, all in all, it was good. It was low turnout, I thought. Um, we had 22.8% turnout, and I, in your packet, um, I have first the unofficial results, then I have the day-to-day count of the early voting. And the last thing is I did a tender look back at state primaries, and they would run between 18 and 20%. In 2020, it jumped to 36, and that was when mail-in voting started, so it does increase turnout. Um, and we were 22.8, and I don't know, it could have been the, the weather that kept people back, or maybe not interested in the race, I'm not sure. Out of the 280, 37 votes cast, 1,500, over 1,500 are early voting. So that's 55% of the ballots cast were votes. So we had to process every ballot as they were requested, returned, and then kept in the vault till election day, and then cast in the machines on election day, and that went pretty smoothly. We have five precincts now, and each precinct warden has their own way of making things work, and I just let them do their thing, as long as the end result is legal and everything works out. It's just, it's just great. We, I, I just do the rounds, maybe once an hour. Do you need anything? How's everything going? So it was, it was a good day. You can see by the chart, in early voting, we had 153, so, uh, slow. And I don't know, that's because most people are doing mail-in ballots now. It could be. Um, but it was a good day, and we just certified that election last Friday, and we're getting the ballots for November this week. We're already processing mail-in ballots for, um, the applications for November. And we will start sending those out as soon as we get the ballots in, and we're gonna have two weeks of early voting, including two Saturdays, starting October 22nd. After that, so it is a lot. It is a lot when we have the mail-in ballots. So when you consider the turnout for the early in-person, but Massachusetts gives people the opportunity to vote, and, uh, we have, they can get the postcard from the state. The state sent a postcard to every registered voter in August, and they could check off either they wanted to do a mail-in ballot for September, or November, or both. So anybody that didn't check off November will get another postcard. So there's, there, we have all these resources coming to us, and we sift them out, and we process them, and they've got the best staff ever. They work well together, and, and, uh, they do a great job. So thank you to all of them, and all my election workers too, outside the town hall. It's a great group.
So Jeannie, I'm just curious, with all this extra work that is put on all of the towns, does the state help compensate any of, uh, the costs of it?
They do for the early in-person voting. They've done that for a few years, and it goes back into the general fund. It doesn't come back to us, unfortunately. We did get a, um, approval for a part-time person that helps out a great deal, and this was in the back of our minds to help with that. It's, it's a great volume of work, you wouldn't believe it. Some towns will even open the ballots in advance, and it has to be an open, me, open meeting to do that. We haven't done that. I don't think we'll do it. Well, I'm, I'm guessing we're gonna double the amount of mail-in ballots, so maybe 3,000 or so, and it went so smoothly with the first round in September. I think we won't have a problem processing those. Presidential in two years, might be another story, but things change. The state changes things all the time. So we just go with it and get the job done, so. I don't know if you want another results for the hotter seats. Democrat Maura Healey won in Isang Meadow, 1,605 votes. Over the next, the second one was Sonia Chang dies at 256. That was a big lead. And then Eric Lesser won with 1,669 votes. Uh, Justco, and Justco got 190. On the flip side of the coin, the Republican race, Chris Doty won 465 over Jeff Deal, 406, so close there. And then for, um, Lieutenant Governor, I should have said their titles, or their, the seats they're running for, Kate Campanale won 469 votes over Lee Allen, 358. So those were close races, but the Democrats were landslide, so. Any questions, or?
Anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is public hearings. We do not have any this evening. Orders of the day, licensing matters. Do we have a motion for the approval of a home office for a used car dealer's license?
Yes, I have that. I moved to approve a home office, Class 2 Used Car Dealer's License for East Car Sales, 389 Elm Street, contingent upon the applicant Wilfredo Gonzalez obtaining sufficient bonding as outlined in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 140, Section 58.
And I'll second the motion. Thank you, Mike.
Ralph, may I introduce the application, please?
Absolutely.
Okay, so Wilfredo, um, Gonzalez, he's here to, to answer questions also. He approached the town clerk's office in the beginning of the year for business certificate. And I knew this was something out of the ordinary. One was approved four years ago with a similar business, but I suggested he first go through the business certificate process before he came to the council for the license, um, knowing that you have to go through building and planning, special permits and all that. So he was persistent. He did that. It took a while. So he's got, in your packet, it's actually the approved business certificate with all the approvals of the departments behind it. So the business certificate is ready, and I have the motion contingent upon the bonding, um, because he's in the process of doing that, so.
Yep.
Just to give you some background, and Wilfredo is here too.
Thank you for having me.
Does anyone have any questions for him?
I do.
Awesome, Marilyn.
Welcome, Mr., is it Gonzalez? Am I saying that correctly? Okay. Um, I reviewed your information from the planning board, and you mentioned in the, the waiver site plan that you would be picking up your vehicles that you've ordered online and either delivering them to the person who's purchasing the vehicle or to an undisclosed location for storage.
Oh, yes, definitely.
I'm curious to know the undisclosed location for storage, how that plays out.
Okay, so, you know, since I'm in the process, uh, right now, I'm working on it. It's not gonna be, um, you know, on the address of my residency. It's not gonna be there. But as soon as, um, I get everything set up with the license and the bonding, I'm gonna give you guys more exactly, like, and exactly, you know, what type of move I'm gonna be doing with, with all this, uh, new thing for me.
Okay. I know that all the documents have written all over it.
Yeah.
No storage of vehicles at your residence.
Yes.
And that's the key piece. I think that's, I mean, no one wants to interfere with anyone's ability to do business. It's just that we don't want it in, you know, disturbing neighbors, becoming an issue.
And that's why I came with this plan. I'm pretty sure it's gonna work, it's gonna work out for me. And, um, you know, trying to keep my, uh, my surroundings in peace.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So Jeannie, I have a question for you. Can we put on the license that no vehicles will be kept stored or displayed at his residence, which is pursuant to, uh, his site plan review where he wasn't going to?
Sure. So the, the, the similar license that was approved four years ago, on the license, it says home office, on the license. But if you want, it could be more specific and, you know, have a reference to the, to the planning decision.
So my thought, and I don't know what the board is, would be to say home office, comma, no vehicle will be kept stored or displayed at that residence. And again, how's the board feel with regards to it? So what he's, uh, what he's received from the planning board is a home office. So what he's, uh, what he's received from the planning board is a home office, which means he can operate on the computer and, you know, do all the selling and all there. But typically we don't allow the vehicles.
What if he just added, um, sorry, excuse me, um, stored in another location, not at the home or at the home address, not at the home address? Can we just add that in his little?
His larva. I want to make sure, and no offense to you, Wilfredo, um, I want to make sure it doesn't show up on someone else's property either.
Either, okay. So I don't know how we handle, how that would work.
I don't know if you can.
Okay, okay.
But I think what we can do is, like I said, just make sure that the vehicles that you're buying and selling, you're not storing them in your backyard and having 20 people come in and picking which one they want and stuff.
Yes, no.
So do we need to amend the motion to include that language or because we stated it?
I don't think it's necessary.
I think home office is clear enough.
I could even keep a copy of the approved minutes in his file.
Perfect.
For reference.
Okay. So with that, we've had a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? None, that passes. You are all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, thanks.
I know it's been a long haul, but it'll be worth it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck.
Good night.
So I have an item that came up that's not currently listed on the agenda. It was brought to my attention that we have current rules and regulations with regards to used car, um, sales and stuff. And I was wondering if we could refer that to the licensing committee to review, to see if it needs to be updated. Obviously now with the advent of the computers and things like this, um, I think that would be a good time to update it. If no one has any.
Can I take care of that?
Yeah. Nothing against it. I think Marilyn has a copy of it. We'll forward, or Genie may even will forward it for the next meeting of the licensing committee. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, next we have a approval of a one-day liquor license for Oktoberfest. Can I have a motion?
Um, are we going forward on this? I thought we were waiting for the other amended or brew practitioners, right?
So Genie, what is your thought on motion to approve a one-day liquor license?
The application is not inaccurate. You know what I mean?
Right.
Because the applicant, there's two vendors going to be on file, which I hadn't known about. And, and as an aside, the plan that Donna was talking about, about the footprint of the, that was in the town, the town property use report that's under the purview of the town manager and not town councils. That's why we didn't have that on hand. But, um, I think you can look at this at a variety of ways. You can, you can approve it as is, then amend it on October 11th to include. Their two vendors or the other vendor, brew practitioners. The food guy isn't us.
So, I mean, currently it says for the Brown Farm Oktoberfest.
Mm-hmm.
So the way it's written, I would look at this as anyone that is going to be at the Brown Farm Oktoberfest. I don't know how.
Right, you, you don't need a liquor license for each vendor, correct? Or just one liquor license for the event?
Ralph and I talked about this and we've had one-day applications come through where the applicant.
Had it both ways.
Event and we've had it, and neither one is incorrect. It's just a different way of looking at it. But I think if you're having two vendors selling alcohol, it should be on record that it's approved that way. So I say you could approve it this way and.
So a separate application. So a separate application is what we're thinking.
Should we allow him to speak as well? Since.
We, we're going to, but we're just trying to figure out as far as the two different vendors, if we need two one-day liquor licenses.
Plus you wanted a revised application for October 11th. So you could either approve this as is, then amend it on October 11th to include the second vendor. Because whoever's serving alcohol.
That's fine. Without a doubt. And let's do this one tonight.
Yeah, we'll do this one tonight and we'll amend it on October 11th or if we have a meeting sooner. You never know.
Do we want the gentleman to speak?
So, well, that, so, so I think we have a general idea of what we're going to be doing. Um, but if you would like to come forwards and, and let us know what you're going to be doing at the event.
I'd love to. Uh, no, we will not be serving food, but, um, I would like to, uh, hopefully have you guys approve at least our application tonight, only because there's so much planning involved with brewing beer and making sure you have it ready for the event. So for us, it changes a lot of things, um, on what we plan on doing and our schedule's pretty, pretty full. So we're excited to be at this event and, um, we're looking forward to it. But at the same time, we kind of, kind of put it in stone if we can. Um, that, that's one thing. Second, um, I would prefer if brew practitioners had their own license because, because it's alcohol and we're going to be responsible for what we serve and all of our people are tip certified, that kind of stuff. And I'll make sure that we are good, but I can't speak for them. And I'm not saying they won't be, I'm sure they'll be.
We will make sure they are.
Yeah, Joe and Tansy are great people, so I'm sure they're going to be fantastic about, about it. But just in a sense of liability and insurance and stuff like that, you know, we'll, our, our insurance certificate will be for us.
Yep.
And, and not them. So, um, but yeah, so that's, if you guys have any questions on how we are going to handle any of that kind of stuff, um, I'm here to answer that tonight. Um, if not, then I'm good.
I'm just curious, when you're not at the Brown Farm, where are you located?
Uh, we're located at 807 Maple Road in Long Meadow.
Long Meadow, okay. Thank you.
So, uh, across the street from where the Armadas was, so Lee's Brothers, that little park.
Oh, yes, okay.
So, yeah. And we're open on Thursday, Friday and Saturday. Nameless bug, sorry, had to get it. Thank you guys for having me.
What time for?
I've been high on saying Friday and all the nine on Saturday.
Just out of curiosity, are you looking to do any specialty beer for this one event?
So we did brew a fest beer in anticipation that we would hopefully be approved for this event. And, uh, we also have an event we're doing in Long Meadow as well in October. So, um, kind of for both.
Okay. Any other questions? So we will go forwards with this motion then.
Yes, and I'm approving, I'm motioning to approve a liquor license on farm, not for this gentleman, right?
I would.
If I'm saying it correctly.
So, I mean, if I may, I would say something like a one-day liquor license for one-way brewing during the Brown Farm Oktoberfest.
Okay, okay. So I move to approve a one-day liquor license for one-way brewing for the Brown Farm Oktoberfest at 64 Hampden Road on October 15th, 2022, 12 to 5 p.m.
Second. Having a motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Mike. You are all set.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate you coming in and we're looking forwards to it.
You've had us and, um, if that will be your first time you try our beer, then we'll be excited. If not, hopefully we'll see you before then. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a, an approval of a one-day liquor license, uh, for the Council of Aging Luncheon. Matt, do I have a motion?
Uh, I motion to approve a one-day liquor license for a council on aging luncheon at , uh, 328 North Main Street on September 29th, 2022, from 12 to 2 p.m.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Okay.
Ralph?
Yes.
I just want to say from the time that you received the application, um, they didn't have the certificate of liability received nor the tip certification, but that came in today. So I've got that.
So you have them both, okay. We can, yes. And they had asked for a fee, a waiver, a fee, correct? Perfect. Okay, having a motion made and seconded, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Financial matters. Do we have a report tonight, Steve?
Dum, dum, dum. Good evening, counselors.
Good evening.
I seen everybody live.
It's strange.
It's very, it's a little different. Um, as we get in this and we're away doing things, which is the old way, I wanted to give everybody an update on what's been going on, both with year end and the potentially of the certification of free cash. And there's a couple of other items for your consideration. Uh, the year end is proceeding well. It, uh, as Mary stated earlier, the Otis Scanlon Associates have completed their onsite view of our books. They're doing a lot, some stuff remotely and pulling together financial statements. And so we expect to have them done hopefully by the end of September, mid-October range, at which point then we will be able to complete Schedule A and submit it to the state for their review. I'm sure they'll have some questions and, uh, and then we'll answer those and then hopefully get their free cash certified. It is a, um, the state can be backed up at this time of year because it's right around time people start doing tax rates and free cash and balance sheets and all, all the fun things that accountants like me say, ooh, it's like Christmas. And everybody else says, what are you doing? They, um, but they have stated that if someone's voting on a free cash, to move free cash to call them, and they would be happy to try to expedite it through, and which is what we're going to do too. The, uh, as the other items we have for you, the bills of, we have a bill of a prior year for Otis Elevator. It's for the elevator in the library, uh, and they did some work on it. What happened is honestly it fell through the cracks with all the transition going on and they, um, so it came down. It, there's no, it wasn't encumbered, so we need to have your approval to pay for it. And then finally, the, uh, last thing we have will be the transfer of the fire department. During the FY23 budget hearing, we, or we, you guys, approved a custodial position that we split between the ambulance fund and the fire department. Chief Morse, when he started reviewing it and their view of people found it would be cheaper to go outside and hire someone to come in. And so in order to do that, we have to take out a salary line item and put in the non-salary line item, and that requires a vote of the council.
Okay, that's a quick report. Very good report. Any questions for Steve? Okay, so we have, um, or can I have a motion to, um, approve a prior year bill of $1,610?
You can. I'll approve, um, to pay an invoice from a prior year for $1,610 from DPW payable to Otis Elevator. Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. And then, uh, can I have a motion for the $21,000?
I move to approve a transfer of $21,000, $10,500 from the fire department and $10,500 from the ambulance fund from part-time salaries to professional services.
I second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Okay, financials done. I know. It was like, okay, roll call. We will move on to old business. So we were supposed to have a discussion on fuel efficient vehicle policy tonight. I talked to Mary. I had some, uh, some thoughts and concerns that I passed on to Bailey and I'd like him to get some more information for us before we go forwards. So we've agreed that we would postpone this until the October meeting. Okay, moving on, new business. The review and release of executive session minutes from June 14th, 2022 to July 12th, 2022.
Motion?
Yes, please.
I move to approve the release of executive session minutes from June 14th, 2022 to July 12th, 2022 for the town council and the town council's town manager contract negotiation subcommittee as presented by President Page.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Next we have approve a declaration regarding unique qualities and location of 70 Maple Street. So Mary's already hit on this. Um, um, what we're looking at is a declaration which basically states 70 Maple Street is a unique property. Um, it has a number of reasons why it is abandoned building, possible brown site, um, next to the rail trail. Uh, what this does is says pretty much that there's no other structure like it and for that reason, we should not have to go out for a request for proposal. Correct?
Absolutely correct.
So this is not saying at this time that, um, we're putting any money towards it. We're, it's basically saying that we don't have to go out for a request for a proposal.
This avoids the necessity under 30B, which ordinarily would require the advertising in the paper and on the website and, uh, on the central register. Because if we were to draft an RFP for this property or with these conditions and these qualities, there would be but one respondent, more than likely. That, that's essentially the reason why you get to avoid it, because it's so unique.
So at this time, I would ask for a motion?
I move to authorize Council President, um, Council President Ralph Page to sign on behalf of the town council, the declaration regarding the unique qualities and location of 70 Maple Street, Islaan Meadow, Mass. for purposes of action.
Second.
Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
That motion passes when due to, uh, six to one. I should know that there's seven members on the council, come on. Action items for next meeting. The first thing that comes to my mind is I will have a discussion with our planning and community development director with regards to the fuel efficiency vehicle policy and the inventory. And, um, if anyone has any thoughts or questions that they specifically want talked about at the next meeting, if you could send them to me, I'll, I'll group them all together so that Bailey has them and he'll be able to get answers for our specific questions ahead of time. That'd be great.
May I?
Please.
Um, Bailey's new to this project and, and so when you and I spoke about not discussing it tonight, I would like to give him the opportunity to do a little more research, uh, with which I can assist him perhaps. But this, this Green Community Act was something that the town voted that it wanted at least a year ago, thereabouts at a council meeting. So this is just one of the steps in that, in, in that category of steps. I just want to give him an opportunity to do a little more homework, um, and do a presentation that might clarify some, some questions that you may have. Uh, he's put a great deal of work into it already, as did Bethany before him, uh, and as has the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. So I just want to make sure that all that effort is at least presented to you comprehensively and cogently. Um, and I don't want to make it, I don't want to have you, ask you to make a decision, um, that we might brew later. That's all.
No, I understand completely and I appreciate it. And like I said, there are specific questions that I had, um, especially when we started looking over the inventory and, um, like I told Bailey, I didn't want him to feel as I was ganging up on him here. Give him the opportunity to get the answers.
On him later. Oh, and he told me today that 281 of the 351 communities in Massachusetts have approved this. So I, I want to get some more information.
Unique, yeah.
Well, we're unique in a number of ways, yeah.
Okay, this time does, that's exactly what I was going to ask. Does anyone have any thoughts or, or statements? Connor?
I think as an action item for our next meeting and if not our next meeting, that shortly thereafter, based on the, the letter from Andy about the town manager search, I think it reduces if we at least start discussing our path forward at the next meeting and decide as a council what we're doing.
Okay. That works for me. We will definitely get it onto the agenda. Anyone else?
Ralph?
Mike?
Um, I'd just like.
I'd just like to keep the MLP on, on the radar screen.
Yes. Actually, I talked to Jeannie earlier about that, and I believe that will be on our October meeting. I asked her to put it on.
Yes, I already have the motion and the document ready for October, so.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Rich, I see you in the audience, and I think it would only be polite to ask, I, I think you had a comment?
Yes, uh, may I hand this to your people that's paid?